I am excited that we are starting back with our Cabinet in the Community Concept, and we're starting right here in District One of the City and County of Denver with the leadership, under the leadership of Councilwoman Amanda Sandoval. I want to thank everyone out there in District One for joining us tonight. I also understand that we have been joined by Councilwoman at Large, Robin Kneecat. We want to thank her for joining us as well. Before we get started, I want to send a special shout out to a very special person, a resident of District One, a longtime Denver resident, 96-year-old Nettie Moore, a friend of all of ours. I know she could not be with us tonight, but I want to send a very special thought and prayer to Nettie Moore, and just let her know, we're all thinking about her. We miss you tonight. You are always at these events. And Nettie, we want you to know, we're thinking about you, we're loving you, and we're wishing you well as you continue along your journey. So, everyone, please keep Nettie Moore in your prayers. I want to thank the members of our team who have been working so very hard on this new format to restart these very important meetings in the life of our community. I want to thank the meeting presenters who will be presenting tonight. Of course, we have Bob McDonald, who is our Public Health Administrator in the City of Denver. He will be presenting tonight about our, giving us all a very important COVID update. We also want to thank Laura Aldretti, who is our Executive Director of Community Planning and Development. We hopefully will be able to answer your questions regarding some of the zoning and planning issues in District One. Ulyssis Cleckley, the incomparable Executive Director of our Department of Transportation and Infrastructure, will also be joining us tonight in providing transportation and mobility update. We look forward to seeing your questions and conversations following each presentation. We'll give you even more information on how you do that in just a moment. Our first Cabinet and Community Meet is virtual for 2021, and so we can continue our efforts around social distancing as we work to harness the virus in the life of our community. But more importantly, we are here to start this important community outreach to make sure we touch our residents and that we are addressing some of the challenges around this pandemic, that we can continue to have, hear the voices of the residents of Denver. I know the last 10 months have been very difficult and challenging for all of us, but you know what? We're getting through it, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We're working every day to address the impacts of the pandemic in our community and support through it, improving testing capacity, making sure vaccines are getting out to the people who need them, and we're working on improving that structure and the facilitation and distribution of the vaccine. Financial support for our cherished local neighborhoods, small businesses, and helping to distribute donations of food and clothing and other items. The City of Denver has been hard at work trying to get, to touch every potential challenge in this during this.
Well, we'll try.
It's been a priority of mine that the services that we all come to depend on in this great city continue without interruption during the pandemic, and of course, also during this economic slowdown. With more vaccine, hopefully, we will be able to not only see that light in tunnel, we'll be able to turn it on, and hopefully, our lives will return not only to normalcy, but better than what we had prior to the COVID. So, we are in this phase of rescue right now, and we're going to be marching hard toward recovery as a city. So, let's remember this theme and these priorities that are laid out before us tonight: rescue and recovery. And that's what we're going to be focused on for the foreseeable future until we are able to say we have completely defeated and overcome the challenges. In the meantime, we need to keep doing what we've been doing, which has helped Colorado and the City of Denver really be the state and the city in the top echelon of having to address this issue. Continue, wear a mask, continue to do what you can in being mindful of large groups, and to stay safe and to take care of one another. Thank you all again for being with us tonight. This is going to be a great conversation. With that, I want to turn it over to a dear friend and one of the hardest-working members of Denver City Council, one of the great leaders of our city, the Honorable City Councilwoman of your district, Amanda Sandoval. Councilwoman?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Michael Hancock. I am Councilwoman Amanda Sandoval, and I represent Northwest Denver. I am excited to join you this evening for the Mayor's Cabinet in the Community. For those of you who are joining us live or viewing later, I hope you find this event to be informative. Amid a pandemic, an unprecedented budget shortfall, and the uprising for social justice, it's important public officials act in a transparent and responsive way. Leadership is crucial in helping keep people stay healthy, connected, and safe. We have a lot of work ahead of us as cold nights take their toll on neighbors experiencing homelessness. Our city grapples with COVID pandemic vaccinations, inequality, and housing crisis. Our local businesses and our neighbors and our residents need help. We have heard loud and clear, and the data proves that accessing the vaccine in the Latino community has been difficult. So, we, your Chicana Local Elected Leaders in Northwest and Southwest Denver, are partnering with local organizations and C, D, P, H, E to bring pop-up vaccines into our communities. I would especially like to thank Colorado Representative Serena Gonzalez-Gutierrez, Colorado State Senator Julie Gonzalez, Councilwoman Jamie Torres, and DPS Director Angela Kobian for coming together and all of us working on this project. Our first site starts this Friday and runs through Saturday at Servicios de la Raza. For an appointment for those who are 70 and older, please call 720-410-7108. Or for more information, please visit my Facebook page, Councilwoman Amanda P. Sandoval. There are many, many community projects we have worked on together since I was elected, and I'm proud to represent the North Side. I know 2020 was such a challenging year, and all of us, on all of us, and I truly believe together we shall overcome. Tonight, we are fortunate to have vocal entertainment from two longtime North Denver residents with a rich and deep history, not only in Denver, but in music as well. Vocalist Molly Brown and her husband, guitarist Rich Moore, have for nearly 30 years made it their mission to bring their unique style and sound to every performance. Performing "Went Back Home," here are Denver's North Side-only Molly and Rich.
(Music) 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 How about that? How about that, Molly? That was absolutely too cute. I love that indeed. Next up for us this evening, we have the Executive Director of the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, and that would be Mr. Bob McDonald.
And everybody see me okay and hear me okay? Good evening. Just a slight correction there. I'm with the Denver Department of Public Health and Environment, not Colorado Department. That would be the State Health Department. I'm going to go through some slides here, so Evan, if you don't mind helping me out, just pull those up here. And I want to share a lot of information with you about where we've been with the pandemic, what our plan is for vaccine, and I'm going to go through these slides pretty quickly, and if you could go ahead and advance to the next one, Evan, I'd appreciate that. I want to make sure they have enough time to get to the end for questions. I always start out with this, just what does the national landscape look like? And you can see that all across the, all across the country, cities are dealing with outbreaks. I will say in Denver here, we have, unlike some communities where they've had hospitals that had to tap out, they just could not accept any more patients, we have not experienced that here in Denver. And that's because, under, under the Mayor's leadership, we were the, very early on, we were the first community that issued a stay-at-home order, the first community that issued a face-covering order, and our face-covering order still, still is more stringent than the state. We do tens of thousands of compliance checks to make sure that there's a high level of compliance with public health orders. We were the first city in the state to launch a mobile unit under the Mayor's direction that, and we continue to do that, going to places where we have underserved communities, taking the test, their COVID test at their door, getting it to a lab and getting their results back to them. For all of those reasons, we have not experienced that overwhelming surge in our hospital system here. So, we've done very well in Denver. With the next slide, we can take a closer look at what's going on in the state of Colorado. You can see that a number of communities here are in the red. Denver, and if you look at that chart up above that, you can see what those colors mean, and those numbers there indicate what the two-week cumulative incident rate is per 100,000. So, in other words, one of the metrics that we track is the number of cases that we have in two weeks. We add that up, divide by roughly 7.2 to account for Denver's population, and that gives us our two-week cumulative case rate. And you can see right now that we are in the red, slightly above 350, but as we take a look at the next slide, you'll see that numbers are going down quickly here. You can see it today, we are at 373, and that 350 line there, that means when we drop below that 350 threshold, that means we will move into a different category of the pandemic and a different phase of the state's style system, which you'll see on the next slide here. The state's style system is broken up into those colors that you see in that half a dial there on the right. With every one of those colors, there are associated public health controls that have to be implemented, and we implement those here in Denver, and we have staff members out every day making sure that there is compliance with those. And I want to, I want to take a moment to thank all of you on this call, all of our partners in the business sector that have, I think overall, just done a great job complying with Denver's public health orders. But with this virus, it does not take much. A little bit of non-compliance goes a long way. So, you can see the three primary metrics that we monitor there to keep track of, you know, what our next steps might be: positivity rate, what do the hospitals look like, and then again, that two-week cumulative case rate. On the next slide, again, with every one of those colors, you will see that this is just half of the chart. I'll, I just want to make the point here that with every one of those colored categories, the state has public health controls that we have to follow. They dictate when we can apply for variances, how much restaurants can be open, how much gyms can be open, and on and on and on. So, that is set by the state, and we cannot deviate from that unless we apply for a variance. And in the phase that we're in right now, the yellow, the orange phase there, right, you can see that we are not allowed to apply for any variances at this time. On the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about vaccine. I want to make a couple of points here quickly, and then we'll move on. I cannot stress enough how safe this vaccine is. With both vaccines, tens of thousands of people have been vaccinated during the safety trial phase, very few problems there. Over a million people in this country and over millions across the world have already been vaccinated with these, with the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine, so it's very, very safe. You can see the numbers there are very, very low. The limiting factor here is not our plan, it's not the infrastructure that we have set up to receive vaccine, it's the number of doses that we're getting from the state, and of course, they get them from the feds. So, we need to reach, we got to get a lot of people vaccinated, we need to get to 70 to 95% herd immunity that, which means that a large percentage of the population is vaccinated. If you've had COVID-19, you still need to get the vaccine. We're encouraging that, you need to do that, because the vaccine will provide more protection than having had the virus. Move to the next slide, please. You can see the different phases of our vaccine planning. These are tiers that are set up by the State Health Department. We cannot deviate from this. We are required to follow this, and you can see right now, we've completed 1A, and we're moving into 1B now. There, there are many, many more doses that we need to get to get to that 70-plus, but we're working closely with the state to increase our allotment. And with the next slide, please, you can see that this is going to be something that takes place over many, many months into the spring, and I would venture even well through the summer that we'll be vaccinating a larger percent of the population. So, be patient with us, it will take a while to get there. Just wanted to point out the timeframe here. And with the next slide, until we can get vaccines to those locations that we're going to be standing up in underserved communities, the pharmacies that are approved to get it, we need to be diligent with face coverings. That's our vaccine right now. Once you get vaccinated, or even if you've had it, you still need to wear those face coverings. It's 95% effective, the vaccine is, but we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can until the majority of the population gets vaccinated. And with that, I'll stop there, recognizing that we're at time.
Thank you so much for that, Bob. There are some questions for you. One that comes up is the question about what is in the vaccine? People want to know what that is, and with that, the individual is asking, it might go a long way in helping folks to trust the vaccine more.
Excellent question. This is, these vaccines are sometimes referred to as subunit vaccines or messenger RNA vaccines. And unlike the flu vaccine, where they actually take the dead flu virus or a weakened flu virus, and they use that to make the vaccine, that is not the case with these vaccines. With these vaccines, they take a protein from, from the virus, or they take some RNA from the virus. Now, we have RNA in our bodies already, so they're not ejecting anything new, they're only taking that messenger RNA from the virus, they make the vaccine out of that. And then, when, when we get that vaccine, our body responds to that, we develop an immunity to that. But that protein or that subunit, that cannot cause COVID-19, because it's not the whole virus, it's not a live virus, it's just a protein from the virus. Our body responds to that by developing an immunity, and then when we get the virus, that, our body already recognizes that protein, and so we're protected from it. These vaccines, the research that have resulted in these vaccines has been underway for decades. Messenger RNA vaccines are not new. So, some people think that, boy, this is, how could they have done this so quickly? This development has been underway for, for decades.
Thank you so much for that one, Bob. I've got two more, and I'm going to combine them for the sake of time. It's from Facebook, they're asking, what is being done to ensure there is not another breakout on college campuses? And is there a cost involved with getting the vaccine? I know a lot of times, people have said they've asked for insurance cards at hospitals or wherever they've gone, and people want to know, why do they want that if there's no cost involved?
There should not be any costs involved at, at the individual level. So, what they're, you know, healthcare providers might ask for insurance cards so that they can bill insurance, but an individual should not have to pay. I've had some people reach out to me saying, hey, was that about that insurance card? I thought we didn't have to pay. There shouldn't be any payment with this. No one should have to pay for the vaccine. And I'm sorry, Glow, the first question was again, the first part of that?
Yeah, the first part of that was college campuses, what's being done to prevent another breakout?
Yeah, very good. At college, we were very close, we have meetings with post-secondary, our post-secondary partners every week. We meet with them to talk about what plans they have, what data they have to manage outbreaks. We look at that data with them, they have public, they are under public health controls too, just like many, many other venues, they have public health controls too. So, we meet with them every day, go over that data, go over their plans, and I believe with that, we'll be able to control some of those outbreaks that we saw earlier on in the year.
Okay, and I just fibbed, there's another good one, I think it's very important. This came in on Zoom. Teachers, when will teachers be vaccinated so they can get back into the classrooms?
Yeah, teachers will be in 1C, so, and at the top of that. So, teachers are in that essential worker category, and right now, again, following the state's tiers, that's a mandate, we have to get a huge percentage of, a very large percentage of the 70 and older, and then once we do that, we'll be able to move into the next tier, which is 1C, and then teachers will be at the top of that. So, hopefully, in the upcoming weeks, in the near future.
Excellent. Thank you so very much, Bob. Bob, who is our city's health director, thank you so much for that. And before I continue on, I want to make sure that everyone knows, great questions, whether it is on Zoom, whether it is in the chat, whether it is on Teams, even Facebook, every question that is asked tonight will be answered. Now, if it's not answered here, we are going to go ahead and take those questions, compile them, and send emails out to all the individuals who've asked those questions, because you had to log in with your email to come in on that. So, don't think just because your question wasn't answered here, that it will not be answered, because we certainly want to make sure, we know, we appreciate your time, and we appreciate you participating with good, conscious, and well-thought-out questions. So, as I mentioned at the top of the program, we want to share with you someone who is very, very special to Denver tonight, and the mayor even brought her up as well. Our city's chief storyteller, that would be Rowena Allegria, and her I Am Denver team very eloquently told the story of Ms. Nettie Moore. There's also a large spread in the Denverite about Ms. Nettie Moore as well, but I want you to take a moment to sit back and listen and watch the story of one of Denver's treasures, Ms. Nettie Moore.
People are welcome in my home. I watch who I bring into my home, because as you can see, I'm a collector of sorts. You know, I like to collect things, and you know, you know, like the little doodads and the things, and I'm Nettie Moore, and I've lived in the neighborhood since 1927. See it grow from what it was to what it is. I'm almost 95 years old. I've got a notebook, it's, I would say, possibly a four-inch notebook, and everything that shows the change in this area. Everything that I've done within my lifetime, it's a recording. Okay, I, I used to, things I used to like to do was write poems. This is one of the poems that I wrote. Memories of skating on Salome's Lake, twists and turns we learned to make. Only a few people had cars away back then. 12th Avenue and Utica Street, curbs and gutters, there were none. It was 2000 and 2001 before that project finally got done. Friends have grown up, moved on, the homes they lived in are now gone. When I was growing up, they always divided between West Denver and North Denver, so we at that time was considered west. And I, with my folks, I was 10 months old, and they came over to the 1200 block on Utica Street. So, you, you heard Little House on the Prairie? Okay, that's how I lived. It was like Little House on the Prairie, we had our chicken house. You figure from this to this, when streets was put in, see the, the street in permanent? And, you know, at that time, people were friendly, your neighbors were friendly, come up to our house for dinner today, maybe next Sunday, we'd say, you come to our house. We had a good view of the Rocky Mountains. You could get up early in the morning, and you could see the mountains, you could look to the east, you'd see the sun come up, and in the evening, you saw it go down. Well, you don't do that anymore. Now, we're gifted with looking at the light rail, the parking facility. So, this here is, you know, a lot of during the early days of downtown Denver, it's a running history day-to-day, more or less, I guess you'd say, of, of the development through the years of COFAX. And then when you get in like these, some of the different meetings that I attended and... I've been active in my life, because every time anything needed to be done, I've spoke before public. And me, I, I always told people, I'm lady every step of the way, but I think like a man. Whether it's Michael Hancock, Hickenlooper, Webb, or anybody that's run Denver throughout the years, I guess I've been there, did that, and seen it all.
She has indeed seen it all. She is a treasure, though. Absolutely love, love that story, and there is an eight-page spread about her in the Denverite, so please check that out as well. Very wonderful history, living history in many, many ways. Next up, we have Ulyssis Cleckley. He is the Executive Director of Dottie, which is the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure. And so with that, Ulyssis, please take it away.
Thank you very much, Glow. I appreciate the introduction and, and good evening, District One. If we can go to the slide deck there. I'm here tonight to speak with you all about a effort that we have going on in District One and throughout the city and County of Denver. This is our Community Transportation Network. Next slide. So, so what is a Community Transportation Network? Really, it is a comprehensive, collaborative, and efficient way to deliver multimodal projects. And so, we have taken some time to really divide the city up into 10 different small areas, and we're starting off with three areas, if you go back to the previous slide. We're starting off with three small areas first, one of which being the Northwest Quadrant that you see here on this slide. What we're focusing on is really going into a specific area that's indicated here, identifying project needs from a multimodal perspective and delivering those in the most efficient manner possible. Next slide. Okay, so the goals and outcomes from this particular effort really has to deal with safety. Vision Zero is a program that we have in the city that is an effort to try to reduce traffic fatalities down to zero by the year 2030. But with this community network setup, we have identified these additional four goals that will create an opportunity to prioritize multimodal projects with a focus on all different types of modes. So, whether you are biking around, traveling on foot, taking transit, or driving, we will be identifying those specific projects and move forward in the most efficient manner possible. Next slide. I mentioned previously about Vision Zero and the fact that we are trying to strive I mentioned previously about, uh, Vision Zero and the fact that we are trying to strive to have zero fatalities and quite frankly, zero injuries on our transportation network. Uh, this graphic here indicates the challenge that we're experiencing o- over the past several years. We've had a significant increase in population of around 21% from 2010 to 2019. And we've seen a 75% in increase in fatalities on our roadways. Uh, in 2020, we had 56, uh, people who passed away on our Denver streets. And we are really focused on driving that number down to zero. At the same time, in order for us to be able to have safe and efficient transportation networks, we need to focus on ensuring that we encourage modal shift, uh, to try to figure out the best ways to move people in different modes such as walking and biking. Next slide.
Hey, hey, Ulysse, maybe if you turn down your volume just a little bit, there's a lot of static. Maybe that'll help.
Apologize?
Oh, that's okay.
Is that better?
Um, a little bit, a little bit. We see you great. Mm-hmm. Talk.
Good. So, uh, uh, through this particular effort, uh, we really engaged the general public and, uh, through a very content, comprehensive outreach process. And back in the spring of 2020, we were able to assume 800 comments around the different types of projects and issues that were transpiring in the Northwest portion of Denver. Uh, a few, uh, of the areas that we were, were able to identify reflected here in this map. And on the next slide, uh, we will get into the actual process by which we take these comments to be able to identify, uh, the way in which we would deliver these projects in an efficient way. So once we get the comments back, um, from the general public, we figure out how to prioritize them and create short-term, mid-term or long-term projects that we can move forward with and identifying funding to be able to deliver those projects in a timely manner. But there are instances in which, uh, there are projects that come out where we can integrate them into our existing, uh, DODI programs. And so it's a fantastic way to get upfront information from the general public and then figure out, uh, a better way to plan forward and develop, uh, programs to be able to deliver these important projects in a specific small area as a part of our, uh, community network, uh, program. Next slide. And so again, uh, since this effort has transpired, you can see all of the specific outreach actions that we have conducted over the past several months. Everything from the four virtual meetings that we've had, which had, uh, assumed excellent attendance with over 1,300 attendees for those virtual meetings, all the way down to actually getting out on the street with our staff and, uh, business owners and alike to understand what the needs are on the ground. So we can take all of this information and really develop the best project moving forward. Excellent. And so this is what we've heard and this is very common across, uh, all of our neighborhoods within the city, county of Denver. And these are the ways in which we are going to develop our products to address these six, uh, particular issues. One is speeding. And I think it's no surprise to anybody that speeding is going to be a consistent factor in determining, uh, the, uh, level of injury or even fatalities if somebody is unfortunate enough to get into a vehicle or crash and the like, or have conflicts with, uh, bikes or pedestrians on our roadways. And so we're going to be focusing on speeding. Uh, safer bike crossings is extremely important, especially in this section of, of Denver to make sure that, uh, we have, uh, solid and safe infrastructure for people on bike to be able to navigate around connectivity as well. You can have a safe network, but it needs to be connected so people can get to all the amenities within, uh, the city. Uh, another big, uh, concern that we always hear about is, uh, the, uh, the impact on parking for a lot of our neighborhoods and businesses. This is something where we always, uh, try to be sensitive to the issues with removing parking. It is a balancing act and it's something that we definitely realize that we want to try to minimize the impact on parking at the same time, building out a safe infrastructure for those on bike and on foot. Visibility at, at, uh, and alignment at intersections and mid-block as well as pedestrian connectivity along, uh, specific quarters or, or again, things that we've heard from the community that will be integrated into what we design moving forward. Slide. Okay. So this is where we are today, uh, with, uh, regards to our bike network. Our community transportation network is going to be focused on improving and creating low-stress bicycle facilities with a, an additional enhancement to safety for pedestrians and other vehicles as well. But, uh, so far we have installed as of 2020, uh, two, uh, new bike, uh, projects within this portion of the city, the Northwest portion. We have, uh, West 50th Avenue, uh, bike lane between Tennyson and Lowell Boulevard and then 35th Avenue, uh, from Sheridan going east. This is what we've accomplished since last year. And next slide. We are fast forward to the year 2022, the network will look like this where as you can see, we will have a fully fleshed out, connected and safe network for people to be able to maneuver on bikes and get to where they need to go. Next slide. And so what we are planning for this year, uh, for 2021 is actually two projects that will highlight on this particular side. The first is, uh, North Zuni from 46 to 52nd, uh, Avenue where we'll be installing a bikeway on that particular structure roadway. And then, uh, the second, uh, bike lane project that we have planned is West Byron Place from Sheridan to Vrain to provide that connection to, uh, Sloane's Lake and the like in a much more safer manner. So what you will see is, uh, uh, not only striping, but additional signage to be able to indicate to bicyclists where and how they can use these, uh, new pieces of bike infrastructure moving forward. Next slide. All right. So I, I went through the, the concept of the community transportation network. We identified the, the reason for this new approach from our department's perspective. Uh, but there's always opportunities to remain engaged to how we are to design these unique features out on a roadway to make pedestrians and bicyclists and all users of our transportation system, um, more efficient and much more safe. And so if you have any issues or you want to learn more about our community network, uh, approach in the Northwest area, uh, please email denvermoves@denvergov.org to be added to the project mailing list. So you will receive not only information about the projects themselves, but, uh, of course, updates about, uh, the, uh, up, uh, the pending outreach efforts that we have going on. And then again, we do have kind of a, a shortened URL here where you can log on and you can definitely see more updates on a consistent basis on our webpage there that's indicated on the slide. And our next open house will be the spring of 2021, which we will be sharing that information moving forward. So I believe that is the last slide for me. I will stop now and see if there are any questions from you, Glow. Thank you.
Yes, there are questions, quite a few questions. Um, we will, uh, get to at least one of them for the sake of time, Ulysse. This is coming from David Chen. He says, can you talk about the upcoming multimodal scooter bike share service provider and how the bike network will improve because of their participation in the city?
Great question. So just to level set, um, we, uh, last year unfortunately lost our city's bike share system. And at the same time, we had come to a, a great point in our pilot program for the scooter shares, uh, system that you see out there. So think about the Lime scooters, the Bird scooters, uh, and the like. We, uh, are very close with selecting a, a partner with the city to be able to provide not only, not only scooters, but also to provide and reinstitute our bike share program. So you will be hearing an announcement here, hopefully very soon around who those vendors are, and we're very excited about that. It, uh, and to the second half of the question, I think definitely the reason why we are building out this infrastructure is to be able to accommodate those new modes of transportation, bike share, scooter share, and whatever comes about, anything. But, uh, the over reliance on cars is something that we're going to have to really, uh, move forward with as a department and as a city so we can remain sustainable. And so everybody, all users of the system can, can be safe.
Alrighty, thank you so very much. That's Ulysse Cleckley. And again, I want to reiterate, any question that was asked here tonight on, whether it is on the chat, on Zoom, on Teams, on Facebook, if it was not answered, we will get an answer to you. So all of these questions are going to be compiled and they then will be sent to the email that you used to register to come on board. So thanks again, Ulysse, for all of your hard work. Appreciate that. Great information. Next up, we have a, uh, well, we have some words from one of our sponsors.
All right. Hello. Uh, my name is Corlin Hauser. Uh, I'm with Denver Community Plan and Development and I work on a, a program called Neighborhood Planning Initiative or NPI. Uh, could we start the slides, please? So NPI is Denver's plan covering the entire city with neighborhood plans within a period of, and approximately 15 years or so. I'm joined today by a couple of our project managers within the program, Howard and Ellis Stevie. Uh, and they'll also be talking in a couple of minutes to give you some more details on specific plan processes. Uh, we do have two in Council District One. It's, uh, the West Area Plan and the Near Northwest Area Plan. Uh, West is in process for approximately a year and a half already. Uh, and most of that plan is in Council District Three, but a portion of it's in the West Colfax Neighborhood, uh, in Council District One. And Near Northwest is our next planning process. It'll be kicking off in earnest a little bit later this year. Uh, we think we'll have a public launch, um, sometime in the spring. Uh, and that covers almost half of Council District One. It's basically all of the area from, uh, uh, between, uh, Inca and Federal, uh, within the district. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, it might be helpful to start though, with a few words about why we do plans in the first place. Um, why, why plan at all? Uh, the answer is to create a shared vision that addresses the diverse needs and concerns of the community. Uh, a shared vision, working with the community to define what the vision is. What a plan do? They inform how things should evolve and change in the future in a way that benefits the community. That's really the idea. Change is inevitable, uh, and the plans help to guide change. Our process for doing this is that we engage people in a dialogue and talk about the future, define the vision for what that future looks like. Uh, and then what the plan really is, is a set of recommendations and strategies for achieving the vision. And once with documents complete, we use it to inform, uh, decision-making, both public investments and, um, private development. The plan is, you know, useful for, um, guiding change in a general sense in the future. Uh, a couple of things that plans don't do, and that's a common question that we get. Plans don't change regulations in and of themselves. Uh, they're just a guideline, uh, for what should happen, um, but they don't actually determine budgets, um, or, uh, you know, we don't design projects specifically, um, using the plans. That's all follow-up and part of the implementation. Uh, so these really are higher-level visioning documents that provide general guidance. Um, with that, I'll turn it over to Eugene Howard. He'll give you a quick update on the West planning process.
Thank you, Corlin. As Corlin just mentioned, my name is Eugene Howard. I'm a senior city planner, uh, leading the West Area Planning Effort. Uh, that process has been underway since October of 2019. Uh, we spent our first year really getting into, uh, existing conditions, uh, information and facts on the ground and really working with the council offices and stakeholders and members of the community to really truly do our best to understand, uh, West Denver. Um, after 12 months of that work, we have entered into developing recommendations and are currently in the process of reviewing recommendations with our council offices and members of their staff. We're also working internally, uh, with a lot of coordination with all the different various city agencies. And, uh, we will begin reviewing, uh, our very early, very preliminary draft, uh, recommendations with the steering committee. And our intention is, uh, throughout the first quarter of 2021, to get that material to a place where we're ready to present it publicly. Uh, so this is where we really ask for your help. Uh, over the first part of this year, we will be, uh, engaged in a really robust outreach effort, as you can see illustrated by the green line there in the presentation. Um, and this is really where we want to work with all community members, registered neighborhood organizations, nonprofit organizations, and just you, the folks sitting at home, to make sure that we are really truly, uh, capturing the needs and the desires and the wishes and the future aspirations of the residents in, uh, District One. Uh, so, uh, we hope that by going through the recommendations and working with you all to develop a, a first draft plan, that we'll have that ready by late spring, early summer, with a target of really going through the adoption process by late summer or early fall. Uh, so, um, please reach out. Uh, you can reach me directly through our plan project website, which is denvergov.org/westplan. I would be happy to meet with any organization, uh, whether it's a group or one-on-one to share more information, um, and to let you know how you can get involved in guiding this, uh, long-term vision for, uh, the, the residents of, uh, District One and West Denver. And with that, I'd like to turn things over to my colleague, Ellis Stevie, who will tell you about the upcoming planning effort. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Eugene. Um, my name is Ellis Stevie. I am a senior city planner. And I am also the interim project manager for the Near Northwest Plan area. Um, so as Corlin mentioned, uh, this area includes four neighborhoods. So that's Chaffee Park, Sunnyside, Highland and Jefferson Park neighborhoods. Um, so this plan is, uh, it's behind the, the West Plan that Eugene's talking about. It is just getting started. So this is actually a great time for community members to get involved. Um, the easiest way to do that right now is to visit the plan webpage. Um, and that's at the bottom of this slide, denvergov.org/nearnorthwestplan. Um, if you have a smartphone, you can open up your camera app and point your phone to the QR code in the top right corner. Um, and that will take you right to the plan page. So you don't even have to type it in. Um, so from that page, um, you can sign up for emails. Uh, and that way you'll be the first to know about public meetings, surveys and other ways to get involved. Um, it's also where we will post information about past meetings, um, as well as things like draft plan recommendations, uh, for review. Uh, we also have an interest form open where you can let us know how you want to be involved in the future, uh, including applying to be on the steering committee. That's available on the plan page right now and it'll be open through mid-February. So we really look forward to working with this community on this plan. Um, thank you all and check out that plan page to get involved. You can also find my email on there and you're welcome to reach out with any questions. Um, so now, Corlin, Eugene and I are happy to answer any questions about neighborhood planning. Thank you.
Okay, I think we have several of them and let me see. Again, I want to reiterate it and I'm going to keep saying it. Any question we don't get to tonight, we'll definitely be getting that answer to each of you because the questions are coming in fast and that is really good. But this one is coming in from, um, Leslie on Zoom. She says, what weights do RNOs hold in the NPI and city planning in general? Many changes due to participate, having to pay money to be heard by my city, isn't very equitable?
And I'm happy to take that one. So as, um, registered neighborhood organizations are important partners in the planning process, uh, but they're not the only way to participate. So, um, you know, if RNO charges dues that you're unable, um, to afford, it's something that you're voids in a way, uh, in a planning process. Uh, we have many ways to engage and in fact, um, taking advantage of, uh, the opportunity Ella just mentioned to, uh, fill out our interest survey, uh, express your interest if you want to be, uh, steering committee or might be interested in a focus group. Um, you know, membership in an RNO is in no way required to participate in the planning process. Many ways to engage.
Much, okay. Thank you so very much. I am not sure if, uh, you could, if your screen froze up there. So I think we got everything that you put out there. So thank you all so very much. I think right now we are going to go for another commercial break and on the other side, you'll be hearing from Mayor Hancock and Councilwoman Sandoval. Back and forth.
Winter is here and icy sidewalk conditions can be dangerous for pedestrians. All Denver property owners are responsible for the sidewalk in front of their property. If you see an icy spot on a public sidewalk, call 311 or report the problem through pocketgov.com. Remember to include a picture if you can, as they are always helpful to identify the exact location. The city will then send out a neighborhood inspector to the address as soon as possible. Businesses and apartment buildings are required to begin snow removal. Businesses and apartment buildings are required to begin snow removal as soon as it stops snowing. Residential properties have twenty-four hours until they have to shovel. Let's all do our part to keep Denver's sidewalks safe for everyone. Denver 311 and Pocket Gov are helping you navigate Denver city services.
How about that, just making sure that everybody knows, since we do have some snow on the ground, wanted to make sure that everybody knew where they stood as far as what they need to do. So as promised, we save some time for the mayor and for Councilwoman Sandoval to answer your questions as we are coming up towards the end of this evening's program. And so Mayor Hancock, the first question that I'm seeing out of Facebook deals with not just the vaccine, but how much longer do you think it's going to be before we return to normal? And again, realizing you don't have a magic eight ball, I certainly wanted to make sure that I got that question in. That's been asked several times online. So there you have it.
Glow, the reality is there really is no way to tell, but I can tell you what most experts and public health leaders are saying if the people, if one, there are a couple of variables, obviously, that are very important. One, we have to have enough vaccine to vaccinate anywhere from sixty-five to seventy percent of our public. And two, we need to make sure people want to take the vaccine. That's very important that people step up and take the vaccine. So we got to get through these phases, get people vaccinated, and from one and two doses so that we can be, we can have a herd immunity. So if you follow the the strategy that has been laid out by the federal government and state in terms of how we will be vaccinating people in terms of categories, ages, and other mitigating circumstances, you can assume that by late summer, we will have at least enough people vaccinated to where you'll see us beginning to emerge and move toward more normalcy. And I really believe the early fall, that is what will be. That is just the estimate of most experts, that is, if we get enough vaccination. I will say this, and it's not about being political. I'm glad that there's a new leader who is pushing for a very aggressive vaccination strategy in the United States, because in using everything from our Defense Production Act to to making sure there are enough resources on the street to get needles into arms and making sure folks are vaccinated. With that type of focus, we'll be able to meet that kind of schedule, and it's very important that we make sure people are vaccinated. But people have to be willing. And I was proud to see today that over eighty percent of the people in Denver say they will take the vaccine if when their time comes up. And so that's important for us to get to herd immunity. So I think late summer, early fall is where we'll see some return to normalcy.
Excellent. Thank you so much for that. I'm sure I've got several questions, one that came in from the Zoom, the other one from Facebook. I'll ask you the Zoom one. Explain the court's decision yesterday as it relates to homelessness, and what does that mean for the city?
Well, I appreciate the question. It's a good one. The reality is, is that the city of Denver moved in to make sure that we address the issue of public incumbences as well as public health. And we are working tirelessly to make sure that we promote a housing-first strategy with regards to our homeless. This is not about punishing our homeless who are outdoors. There are far more people who are homeless in our city than we see outside every day. The goal is to house our people. And in fact, during the pandemic, we have spent, we have spent in excess of twenty-four million dollars to stand up shelters, to to provide hotel vouchers for those of our neighbors who are homeless in the city of Denver. But what we cannot do is allow for the existence of one threat and try to abate another. What I mean by when we allow for unsanctioned encampments to occur, what we're seeing is other threats occur or develop in terms of the unsanitary conditions that exist. We are seeing other type of transmitted diseases happen in the in the community. And so the the order that was issued by the judge was that the city of Denver must get and give at least seven days' notice when there's a public health threat. Let me be clear, there is not an instance in our operation as a public health authority, as a county, where we give a seven-day notice to anyone when we move in to abate a public health threat. When we see a public health threat in a restaurant, we do not give a seven-day notice. And so the reality is, is that this order creates a very dangerous precedence, and we are concerned about it. And so we will more likely appeal this situation, but this order. And so we, the reality is, is that we are, when we move in, we are either abating a an encumbrance, or we are dealing with a threat, a public health threat to not only those who are in the encampment, but those who may pass through or live near the encampment, whether it could be a spreading of an infectious disease, which we have seen, as well as the the infestation of rodents, needles that pose a threat to everyone around. These are the things that we're moving in for. So the goal is to house those individuals temporarily or in transitional housing. We've been successful when we get them and come in contact with them, and we offer the willingness to be supported and to make sure that we can abate the threat, the public health threat that exists. So what it means to us today, they said, stand down, you must give a seven-day notice when there's a public health threat. We don't have, we do not agree with that, even though, by the way, we do give a notice, we do post it today before we move in. But to to have to adhere to a threat that may be imminent, that may be present at that moment in time, is a dangerous precedence to set.
Wow, thank you so much for that, Mayor. Here is a question for you and Councilwoman Sandoval. This is coming in from Facebook. Can you please do more, each of you do more, to have food banks for low-income people? And both of you can chime in on that.
Councilwoman Ross?
Thanks, Mayor. So yes, we have Bienvenidos Food Bank in Northwest Denver. And what my office did was in the month of November and December, we did a matching fund. And we raised over twenty-five thousand dollars for Bienvenidos Food Bank in the months of November and December, because what we had heard from the director, Greg, is a lot of our food banks are not getting donations like normal. They are also being hit due to the pandemic and people's lack of giving. So another thing that Northwest Denver has done is we have some refrigerators strategically located in different parts of Northwest Denver at coffee shops. And people can go and buy a roasted chicken or maybe some canned goods or some soup, and you can put it in the refrigerator. And those are being dropped off to those in need. So we are doing our part in Northwest Denver. And unfortunately, I wish we could help set up more food banks. But right now, I think we just have to support the infrastructure that's there.
Let me just join Councilwoman Sandoval. First of all, I'd celebrate what she has done. It is important, first and foremost, that we as Americans support President Biden's American Rescue Plan. One, he is working to get needles into arms. He is working to get resources to our schools so they can stay open to take care of our kids in person. And thirdly, he is working to get relief payments. He has pushed for two thousand dollars per individual family that is in need today because of no fault of their own, this pandemic has disrupted and taken jobs from people. So six hundred dollars have been paid out, and so he said, let's let's finish it. Let's get the fourteen hundred dollars out to the people. We need to support him. We need to let our members, let our know, our members of Congress know, we support President Biden's relief plan to get these dollars to the people. Secondly, I got to tell you, although we don't control food banks being created, nonprofits, philanthropic organizations primarily support them, and I've been proud of how Denver has responded. There've been a lot of donations given to food banks, and I want to just do a celebration of a group of my staff members and volunteers, including the mayor's mayor-o'-ambassadors, namely Romain Pacheco, Christian Jimenez, Jordan Sowers, who did throughout the entire pandemic up until now, set up food distribution services. And we served tens of thousands of individuals during that time. And we want to thank all of our partners who helped, who came out to help us do this, and and all the food banks who gave. And I got to tell you, it was a tremendous lift, but they made it happen. And I went out to several of them. I saw lines of people. Some people told me, Mayor, I never thought I would be in this line before in my life, but here I am, but for this pandemic. So we have been supportive and will continue to be to make sure that those who are most in need in our community get what they need.
Mayor Hancock, I want to give you an opportunity to wrap this up. It is seven oh one, so we are one minute past. But for the first virtual CIC, minus the technical glitches as we work it all out, we thank you. It's been an honor. So please take it away.
Yeah, Councilwoman Sandoval and District One, thank you for being our first virtual cabinet in the community. We will get better and sharper, so we invite you to join us every month in a different community. We'll be doing the same thing. I want to thank the entire team that made this happen, and to all of you, I think there at one point were one hundred and twenty-six individuals, Councilwoman Sandoval, who signed in, who are part of this cabinet and community. We want to thank you for being here tonight. This is very important that we have touchpoints for our community to hear your concerns. And as Blow Nail pointed out, we will be making sure that those of you who had questions in the in the Q and A section will get your answers to your questions. So thank you all very much. God bless you, and thank you. And we'll get through this, Denver. Be sure, wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, and as best you can, avoid large groups. Take care.